Stand for sledge. Let's have a moment of silence for the military and those responsible. Okay. Welcome, everybody. Welcome to the Town Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. We are going to, how many do we have? Three, four, four, four tonight? Should we start with continued public ones? Is that what we're talking about? All right, we're gonna start with continued hearing from last month. We'll call up the professional engineering group who's here. Anybody? Or maybe we'll put them on the background.
I think they're coming in right now.
All right.
People sign in for us? There's a sign in sheet for it.
Do you wanna, why don't we skip over, we'll, we'll start with the next new public hearing? Does that sound good?
Sure.
All right. Scott Hill, owner of property at forty-two-twenty County Road sixteen, requesting a forty-foot variance, area variance from front property line and relief from chapter twenty. Okay, so is that Scott, Scott here? Is the owner of forty-two-twenty County Road sixteen here, or anybody on there besides? All right, we're after a great start.
Rockwell, you're here for Scott Hill, right? Here they are.
Are you here for Scott?
Yeah, right here.
All right.
We're, we're after you though.
No, we can go. All right.
Sorry about that, we thought we were after you.
Well, I pushed, pushed you guys ahead because everybody was walking all at the same time, so. So, go ahead, Rockwell.
Okay, so good evening, everybody. This is a project for Mr. Hill here. He's right here, behind me in the shorts. Pad your hair. Scott owns a property that has land on either side of West Lake Road. I'll put it on the east side of the road. Wants to build this garage. Basically a three-car garage on a west-sided road. West side is a well, let me, before I even get into that. This project was presented to the town in two thousand and seven, and we did get a variance, but we never built it, so we're back here again, asking for it again. And it was unanimous both at the time, so. Not to put any pressure on you folks. So, Aaron designed it, it's pretty much cut and dry, it's a you know, we're asking for twenty feet from the front setback instead of sixty. We don't need any other variances, it fits in there fairly nicely. If we were to try to build it elsewhere, like up on the hill, it would do so much damage. We'd have to build the driveway up there and, you know. So, I think it tucks in nicely, I think it works for Scott. Everything's directly across from his house. Pretty much it, any questions, either one of us can answer.
What's the difference between this variance application and the one that was approved? It's solely the same, the same, same project.
The limits of disturbance are minimal.
Okay, so it's, it's literally the same variance request that we had before. We had to amend to have a
We nev- we never got the permit and built the project, and now we wanna go forward and build the project, so. That's why we're here tonight.
Do we, I have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
Chris, Chris Jensen, did they include the portion of the lot as the total lot, no? Did you know?
The area of oh-point-six-three-three that we showed on the map is the entire parcel from the lake to the outside, to the west, west property line.
Yeah, my, my question was, did you include the portion that's actually owned by the Office of General Services, the actual lake? Because I see that the
There's an area, I think what Chris is talking about is right here. That Rock?
Is that what you're talking about, Chris?
Oh, sorry, kids. He's talking about this area.
There you go.
That area, he actually has a patent on that, so he owns that.
Okay.
So, he, he has a patent on this area here, so that's actually, because even though it's under water, he owns it.
I would, I would have to see that because the Office of General Services owns below the mean high-water mark in New York State.
But, but he has a patent for that.
I'm saying, could you please provide that patent?
We have it somewhere, yeah.
Do they do?
It's, we have it, yeah.
Chris, what is that relative to, is that the lot coverage that you're asking that?
Just, I don't think they're close to lot coverage or building coverage, whether they need a variance or not. I was just wondering if they did include that portion of the lake as part of their lot.
We did, because it is part of the lot. Only, you're correct. It's just in this instance, we do have a pad, so.
Uh, let's see. You guys, you guys got any questions for the
I have more technical type questions. And Chris, you can hear us okay, and you're on with us, right?
Yep, I can hear you crystal clear.
Okay, so, Rockwell, you mentioned a twenty-foot variance, but it it appears to me in
It's a forty-foot variance.
Forty-foot variance, right?
Well, I guess what I tried to say was, it's, we need, it's, we're gonna be twenty feet instead of sixty, making it a forty-foot request.
So, yeah, and I'm not I'm not quite certain of this, this is a forty-foot area variance. But we're not really looking for a area variance, or we're looking for a setback, aren't we?
No, we're looking, a setback is under area variance, same.
Oh, so, so the, a garage is, our building has to be sixty feet from the property line as the front setback, and they're looking for twenty feet, so they're looking for a forty-foot front setback area variance.
Okay, and then the other question I have is the way this is written in our agenda, it says that they're requesting a forty-foot area variance from the property line. I understand that, but then it says from chapter twenty-twenty, or excuse me, two-twenty-eight, steep slope protection, which prohibits accessory structures that would require greater than four thousand square feet of land disturbance. So, is that in there because that's an issue or a concern, Chris?
That, that is a second variance that they're asking for. So, when they adopted the steep slope rules, they said you couldn't disturb more than four thousand square feet for creation of an accessory structure. This is right over that limit.
So there are two variance requests then?
Yes, there are.
And when you say, and I guess, Rockwell posed this to you, I guess, when, when Chris just said it was just over relative to the steep slope protection.
I, I, I don't have the calculation. I didn't do the calculation, I can do the calculation, but I don't have of what we're at, what we're asking for. I know
There is seventy-seven-zero-zero.
Seventy-seven-hundred square feet of disturbance?
We're almost twice, yeah.
Yep, the limit of work. And, and just to, to say something, if they pushed it back, like, into the hill, they'd be doing more disturbance and, but changing the other setbacks, so I guess it's kind of a balance act here.
And, and just to clarify with the board, the structure itself is less than four thousand. The reason we went to seventy-seven-hundreds, we've got that grading blended in. So, then, you know.
Shall I keep going?
Yeah, if you, well, because I'm just gonna open it up to the audience.
Please, John, stop asking questions.
Might be helping you
That's why my phone number doesn't receive.
Are there any other buildings in the vicinity that are that close to the road on that side of the street?
There are a few, I know one right down south of German Brothers or something.
Yeah.
And that's a similar situation, they dug into the hill.
And that's a garage there also, right?
Yeah, it's a garage. Yeah, I can think of four or five, but that's the one that most resembles what we're gonna be doing.
Okay.
Is, is the other driveway going to go away?
We'd like to keep it, and we're showing it being kept, but if it's an issue, we'll get rid of it, you know?
It would be an additional variance.
For two driveways?
Yeah.
What driveway is that? Is it even shown on this drawing, Rockwell?
It's shown on the drawing up here. And if right now you just access that shed, but what, what, what's in the shed can go in a garage, so. You know?
And then, I got a couple of other questions that I'm, I'm wondering whether they even fall
When you're on a town board, you're gonna be off this board.
Yeah. I don't know if that'd be a good thing for you or a bad thing for you.
It's a new development, it might be good.
Yeah. Are we cutting down any trees, or?
We are cutting down a few trees out front, just a couple, a couple of grass trees, which are dying anyways.
The one on the, right on the lake.
Right on the fence, we gotta take down a couple.
My other concern, Rockwell, and I'm not, again, maybe this is a planning board's purview, is when you have a piece of equipment in there and you're digging up this hill.
We're gonna be on the road.
Yes.
So, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna come in here and establish this water control. I'm gonna put this little swale, this little catch base in there. And then we're gonna excavate this out, and then the excavator is set here, the trucks will sit, sit on a, on, on the toe of this, you know, on the edge of the road.
Okay.
On the shoulder, you're gonna hill load them, so we won't be spinning around on, on the property. Basically, working off the road.
Yeah, that's what it'll look like to me.
Yeah.
Do we need a flagman, or do we need to
I think the contractor will be responsible for a flagman if it's necessary. I think it'd probably be prudent to have him out there.
Maybe where the heavy machines, right?
I think when an excavator's there, it should be a flagman, because because there's not a big, there's a little bit of a shoulder, but not a huge shoulder, so I think the truck will be partly in the pile.
Okay.
So, I mean, if you wanna make that a condition, but I would think that's really up to the
Training board.
To the contractor.
Yeah.
Yeah, before, before we issue a permit, I'll require that they have a highway permit from the county.
Okay, good.
Then the county would address that.
Okay.
Chris, when did they change the code for the steep slope? Obviously, it wasn't, it's two thousand and fourteen, the last variance was.
You know, I said two thousand and seven, but I
And obviously, there was no steep slope issues then.
I, I think what we've done with this plan
This is back muted, I think.
Is probably trying to mediate that and try to do the best we can without disturbing the slopes.
Chris, you there?
Chris Nadler's saying something.
I, I am here, but I'm trying to look up the code.
Okay. Give me time.
I would defer to Chris Jensen on the code.
So, going back to the application that was approved, what was the resolution with the two driveways back then?
We never really mentioned it, it wasn't, it's been a period of reissue at the time.
Driveway stayed in.
Yeah. Local law of two thousand and seventeen.
Two thousand and seventeen. All right. Anybody else, Stephanie?
Chris Johnson? Chris Johnson?
He got tired of answering all your questions.
Yeah, right.
I can hear you.
Is, um should there be some notations on the drawing relative to traffic control and pedestrian control with that work taking place as close to the road as it is? And is that something that should be addressed in this form, or is that something that should be addressed like the planning board or the highway?
So, the, the county has specific details, they have a whole booklet of how you do flagging on the county road, and if you're blocking a stream out of the road and everything like that, so they're gonna have to abide by their county permit.
Okay, good, I just wanted to make sure that that was covered somewhere. Chris, do you have any other comments or recommendations?
No, I mean, based on how they're tucking the garage into the hill, they either increase disturbance or increase the amount of variance they need, so it's, it's just that balancing act, kind of like.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions from the audience?
Hi, I'm Alan Riel, I'm on the ECB.
You can go right up to the podium and talk, so everybody can hear you.
I just was wondering, um the ECB had a few comments that we forwarded, and we were just wondering if you were gonna keep the trees on the southern end of the property, and
We're, we're only gonna cut what's absolutely necessary. But if you'll notice on the grading plan, that area with the heavy lines.
Yeah, so just those, let's keep those, try to keep them.
I think most of the trees on that bank are gonna go, because we have to slope it back and blend the slope.
So, what, um
Thanks, no, one second. So, what we usually do is you have, you address us as the board, and so we're not having the back and forth, I know it's a
Yeah, I know, I can And then the other question was just simply, um the steepest part of the slope is the front, where they're cutting in for the driveway and taking out those two ash trees, so we're just wondering what they're planning to do to mitigate the, uh
Like the runoff?
The runoff on the steep slope areas.
All right.
But other than that, it's a nice flat area where they're already parking in the mix.
So, so, to help with that, back of the garage, when we build it, will actually be a fortified wall, heavily with, with rebar. The backside of it and the sides will be filled to the top with stone. So, it'll add as a cap, and then that stone will go into the catch base and out the road, so.
It'll be filled with stone, like, as in loose stone, or is it like, is it
Number two, or number two wash, I think about that big round.
I wasn't sure if you were saying a rock.
What'll happen is the water will come off the hill, instead of going to the ditch, which it does now, it will go into our gravel bags, seep through that and down into the road by drainage, so. Actually, it's gonna improve the situation.
Okay. Do we have any letters from the neighbors? Did we get anything?
They've offered, I didn't think that was necessary.
We usually like to see letters from
I'll get letters, but they've been very, very and they, and I got letters from the two neighbors that last time I was there.
Are they on?
Ship, ship sailor or
Sailor.
Oh, yeah, that's right. That's right. It's probably out of the puncture at this moment, I think.
You know, in response to that, Kelly, I, I don't see where this really impacts the neighbors though.
I know, I just asked because we
There's no runoff going towards their property either.
I don't see.
Yeah.
I think it's a very low impact, you know? Even from the lake, you can't see it from the lake, but it's gonna be shrouded by the house, and
Yeah.
There's a huge tree alongside the house, so I I think it's gonna be hard to detect it from the lake unless you sit out in the middle of the lake with an octor.
Rather than put it higher up on the hill, which it would be seen.
Well, that's what Chris was saying, it's a balancing act, right? All right. You guys, you guys good with this? Everybody? All right, I think we're good. So, we'll, uh you know, we'll have deliberations at the end of the at the end of the meeting. Yep, if you wanna stick around, you can. Typically, we vote on the same night.
We trust you can handle that.
Yeah, right?
We can't say anything.
We will, there is comfortable closing, is
I am comfortable closing.
Okay. So, what we'll do is, we will, you know, at the end of the meeting, you're welcome to stay, and if not, somebody will yeah, take your mess with you.
My wife forced me to take it, I said, no, they got it on the screen. Thanks, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys, good to hear you.
All right.
Good luck.
All right, so we can go back to the continued public hearing for the, what's it, fifty-two, fifty-two seventy-two, Montez Drive. Professional Engineering Group, Scott Harder, and team, I guess, right?
Yeah, we got the whole team, did you get your phone from last time? Yeah.
I tried to get your attention, but
Right, yeah. Um, Betsy Brown with Woodsoviak Gilman, um, we are here again, uh, we were here for the last meeting, the whole team is here, Scott Harder's here, Andrew Murphy, our landscape architect, is here, and Susan Peter Schottland, uh, the property owners are here, so we've got the whole team here to answer questions. If you remember, last time we were here, you had a bunch of questions for us that we did not quite have answers to. I'm gonna distill it down to like the couple of issues, uh, the placement of the house, the setback from the creek, why we need that setback variance, uh, and what it means in respect to the drainage, uh, flooding considerations, and the rule of trees, so that's, I think, what encapsulates things in a nutshell.
How the water was gonna run off.
Which, right, so, um, this is what Scott's really to cover, but, um you know, they have, um, I think at the end of the day, I think what we're prepared to show you is that the location of the house is actually the optimal location for drainage purposes, um, and the Schottlands, who are very good neighbors and have talked to all their neighbors, um, are committed to saving as many trees as they can. They can talk a little bit more about conversations with one of the neighbors here tonight. They did have letters of support from all of their immediate neighbors on Montez, I think they were sent in.
Yeah.
You got those?
Yeah.
If not, I have additional copies. Uh, so I think we did quite a bit of work. Andrew's here to talk about trees and what we can save as far as trees. I can say that moving the house any further from the creek does not save more trees, and it is detrimental from a drainage perspective. That's kind of like the summary, but I will leave with whatever. Thank you.
Hello, everyone.
How are you?
I have some paper copies of the correspondence from the neighbors, if you'd like to take a look at.
Sure. Yeah.
Some made up the copies, so I might as well share them. We weren't sure if we'd get the email in time.
Yeah, appreciate it. Um
Since we last met, the question came up about the location of the house with respect to overflow conditions that has happened in the past. And in response to that, you folks indicated that you have conferred with Kevin Mulvaney regarding items like this, and so I contacted Kevin Mulvaney. I redid the grading plan in conjunction with our conversations to preserve, um, the, what we call the riparian area, or the overflow route that goes kind of diagonally through the property. If, um, is it possible to put our plan up on the screen?
It's just, we haven't taken
There was a lot of documents, so I wasn't sure which one was on it.
The, um, I, I guess the best, if we could do sheet one first, and then sheet two after that, so, um, site survey plan and distance conditions. And yes, you could rotate that. I have my handy-dandy laser to point things out a little bit.
I know.
Can you blow that up a little bit, too?
It's almost, if you wanna see, it's a little bit off, pretty quick.
So, the the overflow route is where my red laser is going.
Existing, correct?
Existing, correct.
Okay.
It does that. And so, in meeting with Kevin in the field, with Shawna, he identified, we identified, this is the repairian corridor, I think was the terminology.
Okay.
Um, so, now if we go to sheet two, it's site utility and grading plan proposed, two oh five.
It's just hard to be impressed.
So, this is the, this is the proposed conditions, and we showed flow arrows to assist. Um, but the route is still preserved and maintained. The orientation of the house was a question as to rotation of the house. If we're rotating, make it better. And the way it's kind of laid out, the way to think of it, at least how I think of it, is this is kind of the rotation point, or the pivot point, or the pinch point, to well. And if we were to rotate it, we would introduce more water over in this area as that house rotates, because basically it deflects the, the drainage coming across there, so the the house in that location and the house in the elevated condition serves to protect the houses over here, and I believe there was a question regarding that, and a desire by the board to do just exactly that. Um, when I spoke with Kevin, after we spoke, I sent this drawing to him to confirm that we were on the same page in terms of what we were trying to achieve in this exercise. The house position stayed the same, but I reworked the proposed grades to achieve what you see here as, as generally identified with the flow arrows. With respect to removal of trees, we had a discussion this morning with Sarah Lind, the hooker who's here, and she has sent you a letter, and I'm sure she'll speak tonight as well. The, the Schottlands want to preserve trees. I like trees, I want to preserve trees. But if you take a look at the current development regulations in the town of Canaveral with respect to wastewater systems, that right there, stormwater treatment systems that right there, elevating the house to a safe elevation relative to the predicted water surface elevations, by the time you put all these factors together, including utilities and whatnot, there's no way that you can't affect the trees. We're trying to do it in a minimal way. That's why we have a landscape architect working with us, who will speak after me to tell you what he's done and some changes that we're proposing based on our meeting with Sarah Linda this morning. I believe the owners are sensitive to tree removal. We have black walnuts out there. They're, according to my forester, considered to be a, a dirty tree, not really that nice a tree to have, but if it helps if it helps to maintain some woods appearance, more so than if they were removed, then I think the Schottlands are willing to reconsider removal of some of those trees. With respect to drainage, um, I took your comments seriously. I went to Kevin Mulvaney, who I've known for many years, and spoke with him, put together our information from the field visit into a a design that we think, that I believe, that I will sign off on, achieves the goal that you folks spoke about last time.
Did we receive anything from Kevin? Didn't receive any comments from him, I guess.
No, it was just, there was an email from Kevin, if I'm not mistaken. Yes, there was an email from Kevin.
Was there, okay.
It was kind of brief.
Was it?
Yeah.
Um, is it before, is this back? Okay.
Betsy just gave it to me, it's, it's, um dated July eleventh. I'm away this week, but checking email pretty regularly, I think the concept as shown on the plans is basically what we talked about in the field. It would be important for the applicant's engineer to state this is the proper way to convey and mitigate flood flows, okay? I think I've done that. In addition, there should be something in writing provided by the adjacent and same landowner that they understand and agree with the approach being used to convey and mitigate flood flows. It would be important to have that in the property file for future landlords. The, the recipient of the drainage from the grading is, is the Schottland family. They, based on the flow arrows here, the, the drainage is deflected and directed onto the vacant parcel, and partially onto this parcel just in the south. So, I, I think they could provide that information. Yes, mind if I ask a question?
I was just gonna
Make a statement.
Go right ahead.
Scott, I took the liberty of driving back in there today. And simply because I believe it wasn't so long ago that we had the property to the southeast come before us. Yes. Is that the neighboring property, the adjacent property? I can't tell from this
No, there's, um, and, and I don't know, did the aerial photographs that I sent Shawna, did they come in today? I created two aerials, um, that helped show
And my question, and my point, I guess, is that that came before us, and I just looked at it today, and it appears to me that that property did almost the same thing that you're doing, you're proposing to do right now, if I'm not mistaken.
This is Chris speaking for a second. Yeah, that, that property did get multiple variances from setback from lake, setback from stream, and all that stuff, uh, some of it was a pre-existing non-conforming setbacks. The, the only comment I have on this project is we, we know it's gonna flood, we know that there's gonna be ice jams and several like that. As long as the applicant As long as the applicant puts something on the, the, the site plan so that in the future, when the next person says, oh, I want to hard armor in the stream or put concrete walls in the stream to stop the flooding and everything, we can go back and say, this, they asked for a bunch of variances and we, we, we're not going to allow hard armoring of a natural stream and stuff that they built it and they understand there's going to be flooding. I had sent a, a note previously stating there should be something that says that the property is historically flooded, damaged by ice jams, shale deposits, and streams spreading blind its floodway, that the owner is aware of historical flooding and associated possibility of damage and holds harmless to town and the engineer free from responsibility if and when the plans are approved and signed. Just because we, we know it's going to flood, it's just that I don't want, in five years from now, if another person buys it like they do next to Ananda saying, we need to hard armor the stream, the town needs to go in and clean up the stream and stuff like that.
So that's just, we can make our approvals, if we approve this, contingent on you putting a note that the owner is accepting of the existing flooding conditions. So I don't see, to finish my point, the property that I looked at today is the ones that, I can't read the lettering, but it's right there, yes.
In the sixty-five.
That's right. And a property that you're proposing to do this to is right.
There, yeah.
And that property to the southeast basically has a stream condition or an adjacent to the stream condition, almost identical to what I assume you're proposing. So I thought they did a good job with it and I assume that you folks are going to do a similar, a good job. And you've addressed my concerns as far as the, um, can you show me a little bit more, Scott, though, where that water goes on this?
I'm just asking.
So the riparian area?
Yeah, right, right there, but now the water flows.
Right, right now, it's like, it's like, it's like this.
So is there something that already directs it that way?
Yes, if you look at our existing conditions, our existing contours, show the.
Does it? Because I didn't see, okay.
It does.
So the majority of the area that is where the water runoff is going is part of this property also?
Well, it's owned by the Shottland family.
It looks like it's part of this lot.
Right.
Well, there's, this is actually kind of a, a flylot, um, if you will, it has a stem or a fly pole that comes down to the water. That's part of us, why it's that shape. I'm not quite sure. Um, but this property is part of the Shottland family as well as this one here too.
Didn't we subdivide that or something? There was like a lot adjustment or something like that, not years ago?
We, there was a lot of adjustment up.
Was it over there?
Yeah. So, yes, under existing conditions, uh, most of it is traveling around in, in this area. If it were to jump this area as it did once upon a time. I'm also speaking with Kevin, you know, he mentioned that, you know, what I think is obvious to all of us, um, you know, the unpredictability of a, of a creek like this. Um, we, as engineers, work with hundred-year storms, fifty-year storms, ten-year storms under typically steady state conditions. But we don't have a software program that models ice jams, log jams, or things like that. So we're, we're, once again, doing our due diligence, I think, and, and preparing for a repeat event here. But at the end of the day, we don't control.
I can, uh, speak, if people in the audience aren't aware, when variances are granted, they're not granted to individuals, but they're to the parcel. So if there was a transfer at a later time, then, uh, whatever is decided today, that becomes, uh, you know, uh, part of us. So we need to make sure that, uh, everything is in writing and buttoned up because you, who knows, uh, you know, what might happen in the future.
Wouldn't that be a deed though, or something? It would be like a legal.
Your, your Arizona variance runs with the land, that's accurate technology we always use. So, um, so it is effectively a deed restriction.
Well, I've got, I've got kind of an off-the-wall idea. And it's mostly directed at, uh, Chris Jensen. The team that enters into stormwater management facilities agreements with developers and agents who are maintaining stormwater ponds. This stream seems like a stormwater facility that needs to be maintained. It's looks from the map that it's almost entirely on this property. Why don't we do that? Chris Jensen, do you? Is that off the wall? That's off the wall because it's a DEC thing and if you do anything in the stream, you need like an Article fifteen protection of waters permit. Okay.
And, and the, and the water that we're talking about, Chris Snadler, is, is not, um, is not constant. This, the last time this happened, to my knowledge, was over more than ten, maybe fifteen years ago. So, um, I, I think if you had a continuous condition like you're talking about, that might make some sense. But I think, I think doing what we've done and, and whatever language you'd like to place into your variance, I think that's a good way to handle it. That's my opinion.
I'm comfortable with that.
All right.
Would you like to hear from Andrew on the?
Uh, yeah. If you have other people that you want to bring up, then I'm going to open it up to the audience.
No, I, I'm glad you have this photograph because I think Andrew will benefit from that as well. Andrew will look to use my laser pointer if you want.
If you want to use the mouse, then the people online can see where you're pointing.
So since we have this.
I'm sorry, what, what was your name?
I'm sorry, I'm Andrew Murphy with RPK Land and Fish Architecture. Um, this image up, we did, we did also want to show that across, um, across the creek, there's also significant, uh, mature canopy coverage. So, um, I believe the comments last time around was, you know, concerns around spawning in the stream and the amount of shade that the stream receives and receiving that, a similar amount. Um, so that was something that, uh, we noticed from the aerial and then another site visit, uh, today, it was confirmed that there is, that kind of continuous canopy coverage on the other side as well.
So when you say, I mean, like, that's, they're going to leave that there or is this something, are you guys going to add to, like, what's?
Yeah, so on, on, on the parcel side of the stream, that was something that, um, pull up sheet three or five, was that? You didn't say most.
I know.
Back and forth.
Should I don't click on it, right?
Yeah.
Which, which one did you want?
Uh, three or five. So.
You're not seeing that?
No, I can skip them anyway.
No, they're answered.
Yeah.
Another one of the main comments that we've tried to address with, uh, with the updated landscape plan. The trees that are along the creek, and this also came about in our more recent meetings. Um, originally, we had planned for, uh, six, with the dash circle, there are six of the trees along the creek to be ground to stump, the stumps to remain in place so that the root structure could continue to hold and stay the last of the creek. Um, and, you know, with the owner's very interested in, in preserving as many of the trees as possible, we've taken another look at that and determined that five of those six could be, could be just left to remain. Um, there was one of them, actually a couple on site that we were removing or, or taking down because of split trunks. So it presents a hazard and eventually will be coming down very soon. Um, but the black walnuts and cottonwoods, they're in, um, good condition. We originally wanted to take out for a place, um, but determined that we, you know, we would be willing to leave those in, in place, uh, in the interest of, um, maintaining that existing mature canopy coverage.
So that's part of those six, I think you said on that side? Or is that actually just, you, you're definitely taking out those six and there's other areas?
Are they access on, up there, the ones you're talking about?
The, so these, I'll quick on, I'll kind of go over them with the cursor right now. These five that have dash circle around the center, those are ones that originally we had considered taking down to stump and leaving in place. Um, that would reconsider, could be, could be left in place and untouched. The, um, all the trees you see with the axes are ones that, uh, because of the infrastructure or because of their condition, uh, would need to be taken out. It, we're, so original, original count was, was thirty, thirty-four site trees to be removed for one reason or another. And having since updated the landscape plan, kind of evened out the numbers a little bit. Where should I go for, uh, to pull up another?
Um, versus board that the third tab.
Okay, so this updated landscape plan represents, um, changes since our, our last meeting. We've come back in with, um, a, a lot more proposed trees and shrubs, especially along, on the creek bank. Um, all in all, we're proposing twenty-eight, um, canopy or keystone tree species as well as ninety-four different, uh, woody shrubs, uh, mostly natives. Um, this was exciting for, for us to, to look at the site and, um, yes, you know, it is a wooded site, but it's all primarily two species. There's the black walnut and cottonwoods, which tend to be aggressive natives. Whereas now we have the opportunity to come back in with oaks, um, tulip trees, birches, and really just a little bit more ecological diversity to, um, you know, to keep the woodland look, but also the woodland, uh, utility, actually ecological utility. So, yeah, to, to keep it brief, we're proposing a great number of, um, replacement trees and, and woody shrubs. And I can speak in more detail to those if.
Do you have the numbers? How many are coming down from here?
Uh, so thirty-four would be coming down. Um, six, originally six were proposed to be ground to stump. Uh, but those, we can, we can bring that down to one ground to stump and, and leave five of them. And then in terms of new trees, it would be, um, twenty-eight new trees to supplement all the existing trees and, um, and ninety-four woody shrubs of one, of one type or another. Just for the site, you know, okay, once, once the house is tied down. Um, you know, working with the architect, we'll figure out the foundation line, but, um, those numbers pertain just to the larger, larger site.
Andrew, could you talk about the riparian area?
Yo, the riparian, so the riparian area that Scott was referencing, we've, um, uh, specified a conservation seed mix as opposed to a, a turf lawn. So this entire green hatch, um, area that you see on, on that side of the driveway and then on the opposite side as well to follow, to follow the grading. Um, that would be a, a conservation mix, um, mix of approximately twenty to twenty-five native grasses and perennials um, to, um, yeah, to, again, to provide that, that diversity and also work with the stormwater design in slowing the velocity of the water.
Anybody else? Do you have any, anybody have any other questions? I'm assuming this is the drain underneath the.
Uh, there's a culvert underneath the, the driveway, four normal floors. One of the, if this is the overflow, we're about to refer again, water would go over the driveway.
All right, so we'll open it up to the audience. Thank you.
Hi, um, my name is Sarah Linda Hooker. Um, I am, um, one of a family group that owns the property immediately to the south of this. If we could have the, um, that encore, um, view up, that would be helpful, I think. So I'm, um, I apologize for not having been here last month. I realize I'm coming in kind of towards the end of the discussion. Um, but, and I have written a letter that I don't, I only, um, sent to town yesterday. So I don't know if you've had an opportunity to read it yet. I'm gonna just read it again. Um, hopefully you've, you've absorbed it, but I would like to make some points. Um, I'm just trying to kind of summarize what I have to say about the, um, the, the variance tests in particular. Um, to, to begin with, I have to say, I'm, um, there are a couple of reasons why I probably should be keeping my mouth shut here. One is I'm a little hesitant to, um, uh, oppose a very well-developed, uh, plan on the part of a neighbor. Um, and the second one is that the approachments into the hundred, um, foot setback are something that applies to the property that my family owns. Um, there are actually two buildings that have come within, um, uh, thirty-five feet of the stream, uh, that, that are part of our complex there on the south side of Menneith Creek and also our tennis court, which is right opposite the Shottland property here, um, does. So, um, you know, you may consider that I'm being a little hypocritical in, um, objecting to this, but I kind of feel as if somebody needs to stand up for the wooded property here. And so, um, I'm here anyway, and I have shared my concerns with the Shottlands and they have been very cordial and, uh, willing to talk. And I've been, uh, very happy to, to be able to talk about alternatives with them. So, um, the, the, the title that's on this, this development in the, uh, the plans and so on is the house in the woods, the woods house, or la maison des bois, as the, um, the architectural rendering says. So that's a house in the woods, which is an idea that I find very appealing. Um, but I don't believe that this, that's, that's an accurate description. Um, this, if you want a house in the woods, you do not start by clearing the site of the great majority of the trees there. Um, this is not a house in the woods. It's a very elegant house, um, set in a very beautifully, beautifully landscaped lawn. That's very different from a house in the woods. This is a house in, a place where the woods used to be. And the woods that are there now, which serve the function of a true riparian buffer, a mature, um, landscape buffer on the, uh, edge of the woods, that woods is a casualty of this project. Um, my discussion is going to be basically on the five tests for an area variance. Um, I'll just go through them one at a time and kind of give you a summary of, of my, my reaction. Uh, the first one is whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to the nearby properties, um, as a result of the granting of this variance. The applicant has indicated that, that the proposed use is consistent with the surrounding neighborhood. Um, it is true that surrounding neighborhood is residential, um, but that's not the same thing as saying this is not detrimental. This parcel is a really unusual and rare instance of a wooded, uh, a, a large wooded parcel within the, the delta portion of, um, one of these sites. And if you look at Mantive Point in the context of also Tichner Point and Point Rochester, there's nothing else like this. This is, there, there's two acres of woods there, um, on the Shottland part. There's another roughly, something a little bit less than an acre of woods adjacent to the creek on our side. Um, and at the other points, there's nothing like that. Um, and the, uh, so this is kind of an unusual, a rare even, uh, example of a wooded riparian buffer. And riparian buffers are addressed extensively in the town's open space plan. They go on and on about the value of the riparian buffer, why you need to have natural vegetation as, you know, for a deep band along the sides of the streams. Um, so, and I know the environmental conservation board's comments, um, addressed that as well. So I, to my mind, the clearing of an existing riparian buffer in order to, to accommodate a new development in the house is definitely an undesirable change of character in the neighborhood and, uh, and actually in the town as a whole because it represents the loss of a rare, um, uh, environmental or natural resource, environmental feature. Um, so test number two, whether the benefit sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method that's feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. Um, here, the applicant has argued that this proposed site plan is the only or the optimal development solution given the, all of the required setbacks and utilities and flood plan and access and so on. Um, I respectfully disagree from this statement. Um, I believe if the applicant had approached the design of this with the assumption that that one hundred-foot setback was a true constraint, they could have come up with a, a very reasonable plan that would, uh, essentially make use of the, of the, the northern portion, the portion outside the one hundred-foot setback. And they could accommodate, I mean, that's still, if you kind of look at the site plan and you eyeball it, it looks as if the hundred-foot setback is roughly half of the site. Um, something close to an acre, maybe it's a little more than an acre, a little less, but it's about half the site. But they've still got about an acre between the setback line, the stream setback line and the, uh, and the driveway. But they've still got about an acre between the setback line, the stream setback line and the, uh, and the driveway. Um, and I think it's quite possible for, for, uh, the, the program that they have to fit in that area. Um, if you look at the site plan itself, and I'm sure you, you did this when you first considered the thing last month. It's possible to just take the, the building and shift it to the north, so it's outside of the, of, of the required hundred foot setback. Um, that's, I'm not saying that that would be the right thing to do. Um, it would bring it quite close to the driveway. Um, it could also be tilted, it could be rotated so that it's on a different orientation and that would take it outside of the one hundred foot setback. Um, or you could start over again and just sort, you know, sort of reconceive the development in a way that doesn't disturb the one hundred foot riparian buffer. Um, maybe the house would have to be a little smaller, maybe it, he would need, need area variances for the, for the side setback or for the rear setback. Um, I'm not saying there wouldn't be compromises and it certainly wouldn't be the same thing. Um, but it is an alternative. And there's another alternative also, which is for the, for the shotlins to build on the adjacent parcel to the north, which they own. Um, five, two, seven, three, which was, uh, the site of the Mees House, um. And which is now a nice generous lawn dividing two other, or three properties that, um, are owned by the shotlins. But that's a one point three acre parcel. It's got plenty of space to accommodate the, the program for this site. So my point is that this design is not the only alternative this year. The, uh, test number three, whether the requested area variance is substantial. Um, the argument that they make here is that the variance is not substantial because, um, when compared with the immediate neighborhood, there are a lot of other encroachments. Um, and in particular, they cite the ones on the, um, uh, Riser Robits property to the east. And also, um, on our property to the south. Um, I'm very familiar with those and in those cases, um, two of them have come before the board within the last five years or so. Uh, there was no variance required because it's, as you know, it's the town's policy to allow the continuation of pre-existing non-conformities. Um, even when there's a, a replacement of a existing building. So, um, in my view, it's really not appropriate or convincing to cite these non-conformities uh, in nearby properties as a justification for a, uh, an area variance. Um, these non-conformities date back at least fifty years. Um, you know, back in the first half in the, um, um. You know, up through the nineteen seventies, um, there was no zoning, that people routinely built close to the streams. It was, uh, people were not so aware of the environmental issues that we're facing today, um, as we are now. And those, um, you know, change of climate, more severe storms, loss of wildlife habitat. Um, you know, degrading water quality in the lake. Um, these are all, all things that are, are, are modern problems. And if we're going to make any progress on addressing them, uh, by enforcement of the town's new laws that try to address these things. We've got to stop citing the precedent of, of buildings that have, uh, or development, you know, moves that were made fifty years ago and more. Um, I believe the grandfather provision is a good one. Um, but I, I would have to say that a variance that reduces a required one hundred foot setback down to thirty five feet. That is a substantial variance. Four, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. The applicant has argued that the vegetation will be preserved along the stream bed and in the buffer. And that the stream then, um, the stream bank will be protected. Um, to, to my, to my mind, the, the most recent, um, planting plans, um. Uh, and site plan do not support this statement. Um, out of the fifty five inventory trees, the, the, you know, up until the changes that they're proposing, they're talking about today. Only, only twelve trees were going to remain plus the six stumps. And now they're saying, okay, we'll, we'll keep the trees for five of the six stumps. So that's seventeen trees. But that's still, the great majority of the trees on this site are coming down. And they don't even mention the understory, all the smaller trees and shrubs and the ground cover and all. I mean, this is a, this is a clearing project, uh, with, with the exception of a relatively small number of existing trees. They're going to go for bare ground and they're going to regrade and the woods is going to be gone. Um, the. Um, I, I, I admire the landscape plan. I mean, they certainly have wonderful, wonderful native trees. And in, you know, thirty or fifty years, when these trees mature, it's going to be, it's going to have to be a nice canopy. But their concept is still to have a house in a generous grassy lawn with a lot of beautiful trees and shrubs in it. That's a very different thing from what, from, uh, uh, what a riparian buffer should be. Um, the, the value of a riparian buffer, a wooded one, is to act as a sponge, um, to absorb water. Particularly when there are high, um, uh, you know, heavy storms and flood events. Um, a good riparian buffer will allow the, allow the stream water to spread out and slow down and drop all of its debris and mud and do all those things before all that stuff gets out, you know, shoots out into the lake and causes one of those round muddy plumes that you see every, every time, uh, there's a heavy storm. Um, the riparian buffer on both sides of the stream here, not just on this property, but on our side and also on Henry's property, which is just downstream from this. It, it worked, it, it plays that function. It works, it doesn't work perfectly. I mean, during, during these, um, large and even moderate sized flooding events, there is, there is mud and mess downstream on, on our property, both sides of the stream. Um, and that's, you know, we, we've learned to live with it. Um, um, but to, to eliminate that, uh, really more than half of the existing wooded areas. Um, uh, to my mind, is just a step in the wrong direction on the environmental, uh, conditions in the neighborhoods. So the last, uh, test is whether the alleged difficulty is self-created or not. Um, and the applicant acknowledges that the difficulty is self-created. This is refreshing. Uh, people don't usually admit that, although it's fairly obvious often. And they, it, the applicant does state again that they believe that there is not a practical location for the residents without the stream setback variance. I'm skeptical of this statement. Um, there's been some discussion about it. Um, but to my mind, on a parcel of one point nine acres with something like half of it falling within this one hundred foot stream setback. Um, there has to be room for a reasonable plan, uh, without encroaching on the stream setback. So, um, as a, I've, I've been a member of the environmental conservation board for ten years. I'm not any, or I'm sorry, for five years. Um, and I've observed the development scene and, and reviewed a lot of, a lot of, uh, projects that require area variances. And I find the whole business to be kind of unsettling and frustrating, as I'm sure you do. Um, because in a lot of cases, the variance requests really just seem to be driven by the fact that the person wants to have a larger house than the, than the lot can support. And, um, uh, and, and because the environmental priorities that are, are, are built into the town's, uh, regulations here. They just don't really take very seriously. Um, so when, when, when area variances are granted, then they become part of the argument for the next round of area variances. And, um, they're, they're cited as precedence and the result is that we're just getting more and more dense development of the lit front area, which to my mind is not, not a, a good thing. Um, this is a vicious cycle and the vicious cycle really can only be stopped or slowed down by, um, by, by the zoning board, by decisions on the zoning board. So I, there are cases certainly where area variances are warranted and, um, benign, and I don't believe this is one of them. So I urge the zoning board to, to vote no on this. Um, I am encouraged by the, you know, the, the, the recent, um, uh, statements by the applicants that they're in favor of, uh, uh, taking a different approach on the woods. And I, I, I hope that you're able to, um, work something out that will result in the, uh, substantial retention of the woods that's there now. So glad to answer any questions if you might have them.
Thank you.
Otherwise, thank you.
Um, I think you can say, I don't think anybody has any questions for you. Well, you know, if you have something else at the end, you know, we'll call you back. Um, did you guys, anybody want to, what can?
I do. So, um. So I, I, I think we gotta like think about what we're looking at here. So the arguments you're hearing, um. Are really not about, they're not specific to the variance. They're about woods. Whether, wherever this house goes, the woods are going to be affected. The, the question is, is there a difference between a variance and no variance? What's the impact of the variance? Not what's the impact of building a house on the slot? The impact of that building a house on this lot is that trees will be removed, which by the way, I don't believe the town regulates removal of trees. I think those trees, correct me if I'm wrong, but.
If it's, depends on how big the lot is, so, but.
But in any event, the, the issue is really not, it's, it, you're talking about the difference of whether a house is built or not built.
Well, but we're also talking about whether it's built next to a stream and also affecting water flow. So I mean, there are two others.
Which is why I think, um, you know, the board needs to focus on, um, yes, there's an impact from the removal of the trees. I cannot say that removing trees is going to have an impact, but is the variance the cause of that? Regardless of where the house goes, we're not going to save anymore, remove any more trees.
And I would say personally, I mean, from this board, that's not, we, we understand what the variance is. You know, go, that goes with the house. We're not, you know, yes, we all have environmental concerns, but we, you know, we're looking at.
Correct.
The, basically the, the five points of what we're supposed to.
The character of the neighborhood. I think that there's also benefit to the character of the neighborhood. It is a developable lot. The development of house is actually going to benefit the, not just the property owner, but the neighbors in respect to the drainage. They're actually going to improve the drainage conditions. Uh, so it's a positive, um, impact on the neighborhood.
Do the neighbors have, are there any issues now that we, that we didn't discuss that? Do the.
There were, there were drainage issues and then when we put our barn in, we built a whole.
Yes.
I, I think the, the one thing that we're trying to, um, prepare for and have a good, great plan and drainage plan in place is for something similar to what occurred about fifteen years ago. That's kind of our design storm, you will. When, when the shotlins developed across the street, we had drainage issues over there and we mitigated those drainage issues as well. So in terms of the protection that Betsy's talking about, um, it was based on your charge to me last time. You know, to do something that would be protective of those properties and that's what we've done.
No, I like that you guys have worked with heaven and, you know, you're doing the right, you know, right thing to do the research. Um, but, you know, it's, it's a tough, it's a tough position to be in.
And we all have an interest in the lake.
Correct.
We're stewards of the, the lake and your ideas could, and, and when you're asking for the value, we're concerned about what, what gets in the lake besides, uh, the overflow and, and some of the noxious things that could be in that from farm runoff and all that. That's not your, that's not a problem that you created. That's one you have to deal with that, uh, that flows by. And, and then the conversation, sometimes people bring up permeable pavers, uh, things like that. Because if you're replacing, um, uh, trees with grass, you're not, the sponge isn't going to be perhaps as, uh, as dynamic as what you would have previously. Maybe yes, maybe no, this, I'm outside my area of expertise. So then we look at all the different things to improve the spongeability of, of your property.
So I think that's what we've also tried to look at and, you know, Scott and Andrew can get into specifics, but. You know, the approach, I, I do believe we meet the standards. It's a benefit to the applicant, the detriment to health, safety and welfare. I'm not going to dispute that we're going to lose trees, but we're going to lose trees with or without the variance. I don't want to be, don't get lost in the trees. Uh, but the, um, the idea here is to create some improvements and support the character of the neighborhood, to support the neighbors, improving this drainage situation. Um, the alternatives, we're, without the variance, we are not, um. We're not increased, we're, we're not, the, the, the variance isn't the cause of a detriment. So we're not, you know, there, there's not something to be gained by any other alternative. In fact, it would be detrimental to the property owners and their plans for their property and put their, you know, potentially put their house in an undesirable location pushed up against the road, which probably the rest of the neighbors wouldn't like either. Um, so there's other, um, you know, consequences, other detriments that would come without the variance. So, um, whether there is a substantial, you know, substantiality, you're looking at a number, um, that's all relative to other. I mean, there's other similar variances that have been granted, but you look, I think more importantly at the impact, is it a substantial impact? There isn't any adverse impact from the granting of the variance. If anything, there is some benefit allowing this opportunity to address the drainage, uh, and, you know, be, it's considered of improvements that will benefit the rest of the neighborhood. Um, the physical and environmental conditions of the neighborhood, yes, the trees are going to be lost, but that is the result of building a house, not the result of the variance itself. Um, and yes, um, I guess all variances to some extent have some element of self-creation because somebody decided to build something where something does not currently exist. Um, but it is a buildable lot, um, and self-creation is not preceded the granting of area variances. So the idea here is to really have the best possible plan, not just for the property owner, but for their neighborhood. Um, these people all live very close together. They see each other regularly. Everybody tries to be considerate, I think, of each other and, um, so.
Yeah, well, and we, you know, I mean, as a board, we, we try to, you know, we're not here to tell people they can't do something. We're just trying to make sure everybody gets along while we do it and.
Yep.
Make it a right decision for the town. So you guys have, uh, you guys have anything else to add to that or? Oh, oh, yes, yes.
Yeah, a little background. I'm Peter Javon. I think I met everybody one time or another. Um. So, uh, just a little reflection back on the barn project. That was quite a doozy seven years ago. So we'd have, we used to have flooding many, many years. This was, uh, Tom Mees's house right here. Right, there's Tom on here, right? And what, every time it would flash, we'd have a river come right down the middle of our property. So that was the first step with the barn project was can we stop the, that, that's, that, that river that would occur of flash rains? So we, we told we had to, uh, create a new stream, uh, riverbed, bridge, you know, we had to get a fire engine across the bridge and all this stuff. So we, you know, we're big lake people, so we, we love the whole thing, right? Um, and that turned out to be very successful. We haven't had a drop of water, uh, since we did that project. Then that is to, uh, four facilities, buildings on the property full of asbestos. We took sixteen hundred bags of asbestos, came out of those houses, got it all cleaned up, then we built the barn. By the way, that was, my plan was a gazebo. That, that turned out to be not a gazebo. Um, my wife, she, she was a bee on that. So, but one of the things, a, a nice story is when we, we designed the barn. Uh, our, our architect said, hey, listen, you, that's your barn, that's your view of the waterfall. You're going to have that waterfall for yourself. Nobody, I want you to come around. And I said, that is the last that we want. We want everyone on West Lake Road to stop, come out of our plant, our, our property they like, kids go up there and play. And I want to keep that view open of the waterfall. So every year we cut down trees and branches, not trees, sorry, not trees, but branches. To, to, uh, just sort of keep the view open. So that's not relevant to the discussion, really, but it's just about how we think.
Very nice. It's very good.
Yeah. And so when you think about this project, so, uh, uh, someone said, you know, maybe we should build here. The problem is we're trying to get away from our nine-ranchel.
Put all the cars in that jar.
But says, yeah, we're trying to get a good nine-ranchel for our tenant. It's the same. They're all over Rochester. So that makes sense, although I think one of our kids will build, build there someday, right? So the woods is sort of perfect for our retreat, right? And then we designed our drain row and we decided how to sort of configure it and it just, if we, if we put it over here, I, I certainly totally correct. You have a long building here, but it's not, it's going to be imbalanced in the neighborhood. This, what we designed is going to be gorgeous. It's going to be a great stream through the property. And, and, uh, we met this morning and we made some changes to trees and, and add more trees and we're all about that stuff.
Well, that's changing the building to the side, though, doesn't that just kind of run right through where the water would, would flow over to? Isn't that the, so, I mean, it.
If, if, if we're here, right, we're still going to take down most of the trees to, to, to leach.
Well, the water comes across, right?
Come right across still and it's supposed to come right down here.
And that's the natural plane right now?
There's two spots.
Okay.
So that's the expert over here, not me.
Yeah.
But there's a spot here that comes across and that's what we're going to deflect. Or it could come across down here closer to their home and, and that, you can't stop that. If it comes down here, it's going to come down the road and, uh, and we're all going to get wet. Uh, but those are the two primary spots, I think, yeah. So, anyway, I appreciate everyone's time. I just wanted to.
Yeah.
I'm going to put my two cents in there, so.
We appreciate that.
Any, any questions for me? Anybody want some grandchildren? We have an extra one.
I have, I have two teenagers now.
Okay, thank you.
I just had one, one additional thing to add. Relative to the, the house location. The, the house location that we propose is generally in this area here. Um, the comments that may push the house over here potentially and try to agree with the hundred foot setback. Um, that, that is difficult to achieve, not only because of the close proximity of the existing common drive, but also in order to elevate this house to a safe elevation. It's not only just the footprint. It's not only just the footprint of the house we're talking about, it's it's the surrounding land that we have to lift and smoke away from the house in order to achieve positive grades. But the one other thing is that if we move the house over in this location, we create then a gap over here. And and actually, the house where it is right now creates less of a gap and and channelizes the flow back into the creek. Whereas if we stretch it over here, then we leave ourselves open in this corner and we defeat the the objective of what I spoke to about original.
Okay, say that again, so like, so there would be an entry point, is that what you're referring?
How about if um could you please put sheet two oh five? And. So what I'm talking about is, here's our house footprint and and there's our surrounding proposed contours. That enable us to reach that elevation relative to the existing elevation. We shifted this closer to the driveway, we create a gap here then and the and the flow that we're trying to contain this way. Has the ability then to just bypass us and jump this area here. So ironically, the closer we get to the creek, the better control we have of that condition.
Would it, I mean, does it like transfer water, like would it kind of split it, I guess, in a sense?
Yeah, the more we're moving the house in this direction, the more we're then not going to be able to get the flows over here, the more they're going to travel on this way. So, o- once again, these were items that I reviewed with Kevin, as you asked me to do.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to let you know that.
We appreciate it. All right, sure, come on up.
Hi, Adeline, real again with E C D. Um so I had a couple of questions, um we were uh at the E C D, we were a little concerned with um. This area too, because this seemed like there was um that that had been washed out in that area, then that was a flooding area of concern as well. I'm a little concerned about the proximity of that to the beach field. Um in addition, um the E C B, as you know from our comments before, is very concerned about feeling this is an extremely significant variance. It's it's a hundred-foot setback, as we know, and we're talking about more than half of that um as a variance. Um and then finally, I'm a little confused um by the riparian planning. It's almost like they're using the house like, like a dam. Do you know what I mean? Like from where they're putting it, it it's it's it feels almost like they're they're using the house structure as um. As 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 a dam, and I'm finally, I'm a little concerned about how um. Obviously, we're seeing the variance going with the property, um and this would have a detrimental effect on neighboring properties that are owned by the property owner. Um and I'm a little concerned about that permanently changing the quality of the neighboring parcels.
Who wants to address that? Yeah, you, you know, you should have stood there, right?
Okay, so um regarding this swell that exists here.
Yes.
Um that swell, based on what what Peter spoke about with the barn project. When we corrected the drainage on the other side of the road, then this really dried up, right? And and it doesn't seem to pass much, if any, water in the last eight years that I've seen. I I would, it never had it ever since the mid nineties, that ever got, it came out of driveway, yeah. So um that's kind of a grading byproduct that largely falls within the right of way of. Westlake Road or a portion of it anyway, uh so it doesn't, doesn't affect our dispersal area for the the leash field.
When, so I know you said you had to raise the elevation, um because it is, I know it does drop down a bit in there. So I'm assuming when, when you're bringing fill in and whatever here, I mean, where's, where's that gonna change? Are you just changing it in the elevated that area only, or are you gonna be kind of leveling it?
The the dispersal area is intended to agree with existing grade.
Okay.
Uh soils thankfully are really good and dry there surprisingly. Um here, we would have to bring in fill to surround the house in order to achieve the grades that we need to achieve. And yes, the the, I I wouldn't use the word dam, but I would say that the grade deflects. The the surface flows to achieve the same, or very close to the same pathway that's that was created originally. And and we are deflecting it onto um largely the vacant parcel here, but somewhat on the uh the house. In this area too, by the light pole. And I'll do my cover all the items that I missed anything.
I think so, um let's see, what what else, what else did you have, anyone, I forgot, did we miss anything?
No.
No, we're good. Um, so with the water deflection, I mean, I obviously, you've you've got the plantings and the grass mixture and and whatnot. That's gonna s- slow down the flow and also filter it, correct?
This is the sponge.
Yeah, that's the sponge, that's Bob's word, spongy something.
I mean, when I was out there walking the site with Kevin Alveda, he mentioned, you know, that this area was full of invasives and he suggested that we do.
Is it?
Exactly that.
All right.
Um so we took that cue and uh and that's why we show the show.
So he had mentioned that his son potentially would be maybe building a house on the other parcel, is that gonna just push water over to him?
Um, I I don't know if we've defined the plans for that, it will be around forever. Um if it is, if if you were to develop, I can't do, it would be back, it would be way back here.
Right? Cause that looks like a really narrow lot, I don't know what.
It is, it is narrower, that's true. It's it's actually the same width as the lot right up here.
Is it?
About a hundred feet, I think. Yeah, a hundred, a hundred feet in width, and when we, when we did the project across the street, we put in uh dispersal areas. For this house and a future house here as well. Um but if if the question is whether the shot ones would wanna put another house over here, I think the answer is resounding, no. Um that that would not be the right place to put it.
Guys, have any more questions at board? Anybody else from the audience? Anybody online? No? All right. Okay, are you comfortable closing? Okay, great. So we'll, we'll uh, you know, wait to the end of the uh the other cases and we'll make our decision, if you want them to stick around or we can give you a shout.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Where are we, where is my agenda? And maybe. Great, so uh Marathon Energy for Richard, is it tied thirty-nine deeds, excuse me, sorry. Uh for property at twenty-six forty Brickyard Road, representing the the brooners, is it?
The brooners, so I'm Richard Tiddy from Marathon Engineering.
Okay.
Representing Joseph and Elizabeth's brooner, uh on a little properties and Joseph's artists' needs. Uh so the property is located at the corner of Brickyard Road and North Street, um we're straight on the C property. Uh some of you, I believe, may have been on the board in two thousand seventeen when they came in. And were granted one of the variances that we're looking to reestablish tonight. Um due to unforeseen circumstances, they they never finished up with the site plan approval and construction didn't happen. And and based on the information in the variance that expired after a year of no construction. So the one variance that we're looking to reestablish is the rear setback. We're reducing that to five feet, that's the same as what it was before. Uh the footprint of the building is a little bigger than what they were planning back in two thousand seventeen. Uh as such, there's, there's a one-story addition on the north of the end. That that's basically gonna be storage for maintenance equipment for the site and and some of his materials that he needs. Uh that is the other variance that we're requesting, so we're reducing that setback to fifty-two feet of relief. So this site is a redevelopment site, it's in the industrial district, it is a um the closest thing that it matches is a manufacturing use. Uh so this industrial district has some different regulations based upon the uses. So we've matched this up to the manufacturing use we've discussed with Sean and Chris. Um and and hanging up again a little bit. So the addition that he's proposing is gonna be primarily a two-story addition onto his existing building. That kind of wraps around to the south and the west. And then the northwest is, as I mentioned, a one-story uh storage barn for taking care of and covering up his equipment. A lot of that right now is stored behind his existing building. A little bit of reconfiguration of the parking, um as he expands his business, which he's under a lot of pressure to expand. He makes some very good products. He's gonna add some employees, but a lot of it is gonna be some more automated equipment too, so he needed fifty parking spaces. So we did a combination of restriping some of the existing parking area, adding a parking area to the east. Um and the other part of the whole process is kind of making the process through the building run more efficiently. So there's an existing loading dock that is on the north of the end of the building, that's gonna remain. Uh right now, that is incoming raw materials and outgoing product. So that is gonna become just incoming raw materials. And we've added loading docks on the southerly end of the building for outgoing product. He expects roughly ten trucks a week, sometimes there's two or three a day, sometimes there's one a day, sometimes there's none a day. Uh so we initially laid this out with two entries on North Street, one was actually gonna be an entrance and an exit to the trucks. Uh we have gotten some feedback that um both Jim Fletcher and C D D P W really don't want the second. One that is the exit closer there, so we're working through, I believe we can get the trucks turned around in there, it's a tight turn. And and back out the more west of the end. So I'm utilizing a truck as I'm trying to lay this out, that is, they call it an interstate tractor. With a reefer trailer, which is a fifty-foot trailer with basically a truck that's a long nose with a sleeper cab, it's about the biggest that you're gonna see. Possibly even come in and out there, so we're gonna get that to work. Um this is a concept plan, we haven't gone into some deep engineering yet, the site layout, I feel is is pretty substantial, pretty good. I think it's it's set pretty good, uh but we really can't do a lot with a site until we nail down the building footprint. And the two variances that we're requesting are a very important part of nailing down that footprint. So at this point, I'd like to open up any questions for you.
Okay, so you see, the variances will allow you to do the first part of the projects or whatever stage, right? Is that what what you're saying, and then you're gonna?
So the the variances will let us define this footprint that we're looking at right now, will work and it'll let me finalize the site and go through the site plan process. With the planning board.
And what, and the one that we granted before was for the five foot?
The five foot, yes, on the rear, which has really a substantial, I don't know if anybody recalls, there's a pretty substantial buffer with a a drainage stream. In between there, um that I believe he also had an agreement with the neighbor to provide fire access if necessary.
I vaguely remember that, I do remember that. All right.
And and the one on the northerly side, that parcel right now is vacant, it's wooded.
Yeah.
Um if we're ever to be sold and something built there, there's a pipeline easement that goes through there that kind of creates another extra buffer space.
Right.
In addition to that.
Does anybody from the board have any?
Let's say, this is the second time you've asked for variance, based on how, what you're doing with the property, it doesn't look like uh we'll be seeing you again for this piece of uh. Uh property, I think you're, you're uh trying to utilize uh uh all that you can with what you have.
Yes, he's he's actually got a very strong team on board, he's got the design build team from the construction end, getting things priced out, he's got an architect. He brought myself on board from the civil engineering side to nail down the site, so. Uh I did see some of the materials before that they they had done themselves, I believe, and that this is a lot further one than that. He's, he really needs to expand and really wants to stay in this location, in the town, you know, so supporting the, his employees in the town and the town itself.
He's almost gonna outgrow it.
Uh he's trying to build in the future.
Yeah.
Into this, so, so he, I believe the prior thought process was he was gonna have a little bit taller building, like it's out there now and. More open space inside and and he's looking at actually two stories of of internal floor space to to use for product.
So the twenty-eight foot variance from the side property line, so, okay, so we're just, I mean, I'm trying to, trying to picture it. Where, can you point exactly?
So this is the front of the building, so we've defined this as the front of the road, we've got a lot of discussion, Chris. So with this is the front, this makes this the rear, so we're calling that the rear setback variance. This is then a side with the other front of North Street, so this means side. If there's a little bit different nomenclature, we gotta use through that.
On the rear, okay, so like from the north then, right, did you say the north then?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I don't think, I think I'm on, I'm I'm good with questions, nobody else has any questions? About, anybody from the audience, anybody online? All right, are you comfortable closing?
Yes.
All right, uh I'll give you the same spiel, we'll probably, you know, vote on it tonight, we have six sixty days, is it sixty days that we get? Anyway, we typically vote on it.
Sixty-two.
Sixty-two, we have sixty-two days to uh vote on it, but typically we do it in the same night.
We'll vote on it tonight.
Most likely, yes, yeah.
I don't think you'll be too much.
Yeah, fine, hopefully, right?
That's up to you guys.
Yeah, you're like.
Pressure's on.
Yeah, yeah, we're most likely we'll have, we'll we'll vote on it tonight.
Okay.
All right, welcome to Sticker. All righty, all right, last but not least, Brian and Mary Weiser.
Good evening, thanks for the uh opportunity to to speak to you tonight. And I think we have, what, two variances that we're requesting, one is the setback. Um and the other is the actual size of the shed that we're looking to build. So um. I don't know how much uh I should go and do it, but uh this is uh obviously where we're looking to build the shed. The uh it's thirteen feet, I think, from the road, although there's a bend here and it goes up. Uh and then this hill that slows down this way and this is an open grass area.
Okay, and that shed's just, is it a utility shed, what what do you?
Stores, there's no garage in the property.
There's no garage?
You know, you know, we're we're parking on the street and we have, uh you know, outdoor furniture that we've put in that very nice deck. Personal mid-century modern view of the house and, you know, furniture, things like that.
All of our summer furniture, cat boards or kayaks or, yeah.
Yeah.
It's all about constant.
Other storage space.
It looks awesome. So we'd like to be able to clean it up and.
Yeah, and I don't know if it was in decision, but we certainly were looking to make the shed, it's kind of a cool look to the house. Trying to keep that original, like, these look, the idea is the shed would would look very similar to the house and have a sloped roof up. Uh so the surface, yeah, see, that's the house.
Yes.
Picture?
Yes.
It's almost a mini version of the house, if you will, uh to try to really preserve that look. Um the other thing about that part of the slope that it would be on. We believe that would definitely be much more appealing from the lake, because if it had to come down on the lot, it would be. Almost right in your face, you know, so to speak, and where it's, we have it set back, uh we think it would be actually hard to see.
And also, green space, if we're close, we'll be calling green space, we're down to have family entertainment.
Yeah.
I'm pulling up the pictures right now.
I'm not sure where.
I got them, do you want it? That's right at the bottom.
Oh, it's there, man.
Yeah.
Just to clarify, if you look, read the zoning law determination, it looks like there's gonna be four variances they're looking for.
Right, okay. Okay.
So, yeah, so that would be the only other option, which would be right down in that this area here. One other thing uh we did want to mention that I think is not correct in the drawing is we would need for both pine trees to come out. This is one that was on the drawing would be right where you.
The brush draw.
Stuff in and out of the shed, or it would be where the door would.
You're gonna take a couple of pines down, is that right?
Two pines. One is exed out already.
Okay.
Yeah, so this one.
Yeah, do you, do you know when you sent them?
Yours was David.
Oh, you can try that one.
Yeah, that's probably.
That is what it would look like.
That's what it would look like.
With the door being on the side.
What was the size of the shed?
What's the proposed height?
Ten-ten, and the reason it's ten inches over is due to the slope and protecting the roofing material. Making sure that the ice gets off the roof as it is a.
So you're going for an additional variance then for exceeding the ten-foot maximum height?
What's the fourth variance? Sorry.
That would be the fifth.
Fifth variance, right?
So I thought we only had three, but, okay.
You have lot coverage, building coverage.
Lot coverage.
Uh, square footage, accessory structure.
That's right.
Yeah, and that allows.
It is a small lot.
But but the height, the height wasn't advertised and stuff, so you can't act on the height.
I did change it. The architect changed it. He said that it's.
Yeah, so so the one thing is we we have to um publicly release, you know, like tell people ahead of time what's so because the application technically isn't correct.
Okay.
We'd have to repost it.
Okay.
So what we would normally do is just put you on next month's agenda.
Unless you think you can build it at ten foot.
Unless you think, right.
Height.
Yeah, like I said, it's hard to think so we compromise this structure.
But, yeah. I have to bring this to your attention.
Yes.
I'm a residential lakefront owner myself. And the residential lakefront district is uh very challenging. And your variance request for an accessory structure that is greater than the square footage that is allowed is something that the zoning board, the ordinance committee have been very restrictive on. Personally, I don't like it. I'm the chair of the ordinance committee and I welcome you to get on board and help us change that. Because I think it is too restrictive. And there's a lot of those types of restrictions, so. And I also think that your square footage variance is impacting your lot coverage and your building coverage, which are a couple of other restrictions that we're very diligent about. So it would be difficult, I'm sure, for this board to go and pass this. Because they're concerned about setting precedents. And that's just kind of where I am on this. I would, I would go on along with what John said. I'd recommend uh put it back a month. And then come in and work with Shawna and see uh what she can do. And also, you see, then she would have comparables, how we have we done this before? And if we have with something this size, and when you're throwing so many out at once, all you have to do is be shot down on one and and then, so Shawna can work with you. And and I think that would be a good idea, so you'd be more ready. And she also might be able to uh anticipate some of the questions you might get. John gave you a preview. So, you know, if you have neighbors with similar conditions, you might want to point those out, but more.
Most of them are pre-existing.
More importantly, are new ones that have been approved by um the town. Uh, so that you can come back and say, well.
I did submit.
You know, my neighbor had this one.
Did you? You submitted a compare, something comparable?
Comparable, but it was pre-existing.
Yeah, see, so we've, we've been on the board for a while and honestly, I do know that there are some that we have. But we really, we we try our best to get people to reduce not only the amount of variances the requesting, but at least try to work as closely as possible to.
So what my question to you is, what would a size?
That's the question I have to ask Shawna, and she would know, you know, uh, with how it works. Yeah, I mean, if you're asking for five, it would be very unusual for somebody to get five out of five. Uh, I I can't remember. It can't happen. But there you might be, there maybe it's more the one way to skin a cat. Talk to her and and see what you can get. Would you agree, John?
Yes, absolutely.
Way to go.
Yeah, what were her biggest?
And as you can see, to Bob's point about how many variance requests you have and you ask for. They kind of intertwined, you know, so when you go and you're asking for a hundred and four square foot variance relative to the size of the accessory structure, as I meant noted earlier, that kind of ties into your lot coverage and your building coverage. So if you reduce one, you reduce them both. If you increase one, you you increase them all. So um it's just FYI, that's all.
Okay. All right, so so we'll push it to next month, I guess, or would we vote on that or?
I think that they have to ask us if we would.
Would you like to continue your request into next month's meeting? All right. Okay, but do I hear a?
Second. You were the first.
All in favor?
So we will be on the agenda for this month. Yep, great, okay, thank you.
All right. All right. Okay. We'll go to the top of the, top of the list. We're ready to discuss. Do we want to go to the top of the list?
Going to Shaolin property or?
Yes.
Yeah, I might as well, right? I mean, go to the first. So now that.
I uh, I read the letter. This hooker and I, to be honest with it, I, she pretty much followed right down the line as to what my feelings were about this. I I hate to admit that I ever would agree with the attorney, but I agree with the Shaolin's attorney regarding, this is not about the trees to me. It is, the trees are gonna come and they go. I think we get hung up on this board over trees. They're not gonna be here forever and and sometimes it's a good thing to take them down and I understand why. But this is meant to be, same thing I said last time we did this thing. This is not some little stream. And you won't find very many of these that go into Mud Creek. Most of them are on the east side, or I'm sorry, into the Candy Lake. But most of them are on the east side, but this is, this is like West River times. And that's the problem that they have. This, this is not a little, I mean, this isn't the streams that we've seen off of dual road or all the, you know, that that the code says, this is a big time issue. It maybe never is gonna be, like, I wouldn't hold my breath. It could be next, you know, we could, next March, this thing could be, you know, this is West River. So that's my problem. I don't care what people do with their property, as long as they stay within code. But I I think she hit this thing from the five issues regarding a variance. I think she was spot on. It's it's substantial. It's, it is out of the character of the neighborhood. To me it is. I mean, it's, the other variances that we did regarding uh closer to the lake were all pre-existing, non-conforming. And that's the reason they got the variance. There was really very little else to go there, you know. And uh, I I think you've got neighbors, a lot of them to go along with it, but clearly there's some neighbors that are not too happy.
And it's all depends upon how close the creek is and and how it affects your life. The creek, see, I agree with you. The creek is the biggest issue. I would, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, go ahead.
I, if we were to vote, uh, if this was approved, I'd like uh Chris Nadler uh to be in on the conditions. And I don't feel that I have a grasp on putting the conditions around. I think the way this one would be put in writing is very crucial. And I wouldn't want to just uh do it tonight. Uh, I I think it needs uh careful consideration and use. Chris, and who knows, maybe he'd even want to run by Ovany uh uh after we come up with the conditions.
I mean, it's a big line. It's a beautiful design. I mean, this is the, I hate these because they're they're so good. But at the same time, uh, I worry about the issue of precedence when it comes to to an issue.
And now, not only that, but the good intentions of the current owners aren't the same thing as what could happen down the road. That's why the wording, uh, the conditions to me are are of vital importance if it was to be approved.
All of those lines, Chris Jensen, I think, had a whole lot of verbiage there for um what the condition should be.
I think the condition is the owner's acceptance that they could be impacted by a flash flood condition. And I think we could, with that, to me, that seems like a pretty simple condition. And it's something that we could condition approval on, that the attorneys, Chris and the Shaolin's attorney could develop the language. Uh, I think the Shaolin's indicated that they were comfortable with that. And um, you know, Chris Jensen articulated what his concern was, and I think Chris Nadler heard it. So I think that's a simple hurt. Personally, I think the Shaolin's did, uh, and their consultants did a very good job. I think they put the house in, my opinion, the best location they could have put it in without regrading and then disturbing even more of the existing lands, uh, because they're putting it in the high spot. They're not putting it in the area where the water collects, and that was my concern when we got together the first time. So that location where the water is going to collect is still there and it's still flowing in the same general direction. And I think that um the architect and the engineer did a very good job with that and addressed the concern I had. Uh, I also think that, you know, I heard the concern, Bob, about, you know, grass versus trees. And I think that um with my limited experience, grass creates more of a sponge. And also creates a filtering aspect when the, when the silt runs through it. But it all depends on whether the water's running or the water's standing, right? Uh, so if the water's running and there's trees there and there's not a lot of grass and growth, it's gonna disturb the soils and move the soils and you get erosion. If you get a lot of grass there and the water's running, it's running through the grass, well, it gets filtered out and the silt gets filtered out and becomes topsoil down the road. You know, the other thing I was concerned about was that um some of the presentations that we heard were more concerned about the trees. But I don't think it's our responsibility to protect private woodlands. I mean, people are buying these lands, they're putting a lot of money into it, and if they want to cut down a few trees to build a home, I mean, who are we to say that they can't do it?
I wasn't really, yeah, so I wasn't as concerned about trees. Yes, I don't want them all, you know, ripped down, obviously, but they're in there, you know, holding the main and the structure. I mean, there's, they play it to serve a purpose, to get that part. My biggest concern was just that, the amount of water coming through, because I mean, that does turn, just like you said, I mean, it's, it's, it gets wet.
And then Kevin's uh concern was the banks.
Yes, and he's, and they addressed that. I don't know, Kevin even, Kevin even said that they addressed that in his emails. And then relative to it being in harmony with the existing properties there, that's why I drove to the back of that property, is because the other home is just as close as what they're proposing. And the banks are the same and the whole development of that lot is extremely similar to what the Shaolin's are doing. And so I, in my mind, it is, it's very, very similar, it's very, very.
I I will say, I do know that Sarah Linda was opposed to that one on the corner there, the the uh, what's, what's the other, that we used? Yeah, I, right.
Weiser.
Weiser.
Um, anyway, she, she was really opposed to that. She was very outspoken about it. And but the thing is, is I mean, there was an existing house, they couldn't even live in it. And it was, there was much different situation. I believe that they moved it slightly.
I voted for that and I, and I voted for almost every, you know, I do think this is a unique deal. That's my feeling, I don't. And that's the problem I have with, because this is a beautiful structure they're building and all of that. However, and I don't, I don't care if there were four times as many trees, when that, when Meneth Creek floods.
I know.
The water's going and and, you know, I don't know whether this, the house location's gonna help that, hurt that. But if there ever was a reason to have the code have a hundred-foot setback away from the stream, this is it. And if that is, you know, and if that doesn't, maybe the code is is wrong, like you said, there's many that are wrong. I voted for many stream issues regarding, you know, but this is, this is a big one right here.
Yeah, if there was an existing house, it'd be a different story, right? I mean, but there's, it's a whole of.
It's an area that's not even developed yet. How many spots on Candy Lake are gonna find like that? Not many.
And and using the, applying the current science, everything sounds great, but we won't know until, say, next spring. You know, what we, what we really, and, but there, but I have a feeling that these people will make adjustments uh, if uh, if necessary, based on uh uh conditions at the moment. Well, I don't think that we're talking about the spring floods that are the impact or the concern here.
Or not even with the ice jams and stuff.
I think we're talking about, what I thought I heard was, we were talking about a fifty-year occurrence or a hundred-year occurrence where um we have extreme flooding conditions. And I thought I heard where Scott say, well, we know what happened once fifteen years ago or twenty years ago. So I don't think we're talking about the average spring runoff. Was that your impression too?
If anybody who was on Candy Lake, uh, and Agnes, you know, what was that? There was a chum runoff. And again, I'm, I'm not against, build what you want. It's not, it's about the code, to me. It's about establishing precedents on a piece of property that hasn't been developed. And we go ahead and say, well, and this is a substantial offset to to that, and that's my only problem. It's, I don't, they're gonna handle, I I'm not worried about this house blowing away and, and even in another Agnes.
Yeah.
It's blowing maybe, but. But that's not my, that's not my, I'm not here to to tell people what they can't build or what they can't. I'm just trying to follow the code. If the code's gonna say a hundred foot, you know, this is the one stream that that I, I actually think it probably should be held to.
Kim, do we have um any of the emails that Kevin Alveney sent that we could review?
That's actually what I I would have liked to have heard, his two cents. I know we have some.
I thought that there was an emailer too that he commented on that I saw as I was reviewing. I think it was attached to another email, if I'm not mistaken. Email from Scott Hare, maybe, uh, maybe it was buried in there, or maybe it was buried in the Chris Jensen comments or.
Did Shawna ever address your questions, John? We were kind of wondering.
No, and that's what, no, because there was some reference in the emails that she sent, or the data she sent that talked about a retaining wall.
Yeah, and I wondered.
That's what, so she never addressed it. She said they couldn't find it. And then when I went down to look at the property, there were no retaining walls. It was just.
But there were some stuff, there were things that were approved and I was trying to, that's why I sent her that email, and then I realized some of it was in the
Yeah.
Documents form.
And we did, and we did approve a garage on that property in the same.
Yeah.
Zone. Wasn't, wasn't just the house.
There was septic issues there as well, John.
Sure, and that was. There were. Well, let's go back to one of the, the, um, the issues that was, or the possibilities that brought up, uh, what was the lady's name?
Cheryl Linda.
Yeah, and she had said, well, you could pivot the house or move it. Uh, and that's always one of the questions we ask. Could you, what could you have done to avoid having the variance? On that piece of property, is that realistic to consider either the house having been put in a different place or a pivot?
Well, I think Scott addressed that by saying that we'd be creating a, you know, opening up a pinch point there that's kind of used now to create the flow of the water.
Read it.
And I, and I also think that the house, in my opinion, is at the high point now, you know, it's outside of where the water ponds and where the water runs through and from. So to relocate the house in a different location would require a whole new grading of the site.
There'd be like a wall.
Which would be, in my opinion, much more of a disturbance than what they're talking about doing. We could, you know, we just can't guess what, what's going to happen. I mean, water's going to be, who would have said eleven inches of water on in June of, of seventy-two, but, and, and the chances of that happening again are probably nil. And, and that's not, you know, water's going to go where it's going to go. And I, and I don't disagree with anything they presented as far as trying to mitigate that issue. But I, you know, I've, I've said my piece.
Well, actually, and, and the email Kevin says, talks about, it's brief, but it's, says, best way for water flow.
That's what it appears to me he's saying.
He's saying it's best way to mitigate the water flow. That's what.
Or to manage the waterfall.
Right. I, I thought he used mitigate. Yeah, this is a tough one. It's a big enough parcel. The problem was just, is it, is it wet in there now? Did you see?
I didn't, I didn't see that it was wet there today.
I walked by a couple weeks ago.
I don't think anything's wet today.
No. Oh, my God. Last week it was not wet.
To that point, I think there's a dirt road that I drove down today. It's a gravel road.
Yeah.
I went down there and it was home dry and it looked like there were any washouts or anything like that.
All right. Did you, did everybody get the email? Everybody read it? Okay, so, uh, we'll wait for Dave to read that and look at them. Wait. So do you still have, you still have questions, right? Didn't you say you were uncertain about?
Well, I, I feel better than last time. I still think if I soul searching, uh, it's really, uh, it's a huge, uh, uh, variance, uh, going from a hundred to, uh, what would be sixty to thirty-five, right? Sixty-five foot variance. That's big.
Well, if you get through the five, it, it's tough, but, um, that's, that's all I'm doing. And then she presented, Sarah Linda did, did a good job presenting that and I don't disagree with her. I think you might, you might, I don't disagree with what John said as far as the character of the neighborhood because he's absolutely right. As far as it's not that going to be that much difference. It's a beautiful home. It's going to be very similar to the ones that are closer to the lake.
Very similar to ones that Sarah Linda lives across the other side of the creek.
Well, I don't know about that.
No, I, I don't know about the, the quality or the size. Just as close to the creek as what is being proposed here.
Actually, even further, I think. Isn't ours closer?
Might even be closer.
By ours is pretty, ours was there a hundred years ago, so.
And it, and it's, and it's survived. And it's, it's not created from what we know, a detriment to the neighborhood or the community surrounding the creek and.
This house is going to survive. That I don't think is an issue. The issue becomes is where are we with the code? And that's my only point. And maybe, maybe the code's ridiculous. Be the only one.
Well, I think that what we are responsible for is looking at the code and then identifying whether the variance being requested is an unusual situation. And I think the grading of the land that facilitates the house being in the location that it is best suited for that parcel of land is a unique situation. And I think the owner recognizes that and has gone out of their way to develop a plan that accommodates that. And I think that as a zoning board, that's our responsibility to look and say, did the owner do their due diligence? Did they accommodate for the difficult conditions they're developing against? And I have to say in my mind, they did. And, uh, I think they've done a, a really good job and, you know, I think if there's a, in my mind, a case for us to support a variance, I think this is, in my mind, one, one that meets the test. And one of the reasons for variances is land features, which doesn't show up in black and white. And we know that with elevations and with the creek. I, when I, I have to like the devil and angel on either shoulder and going from, you know, that much of variance is a little troubling for me because I don't think we've done, I, I don't recall one, uh, that large, uh, when you mentioned a stream. But I agree with everything, uh, uh, John said too, that, uh, the, these people are going to, I think they're going to be, uh, uh, very good about the environment and doing best they can because they have a vested interest.
Absolutely.
And, uh, uh, but it's, it's, are we breaking new ground for something, uh, coming up in the future? This is, uh, a biggie. And the backdoor ordinance, which you were saying, John, is the hundred foot, is, is that a standard in every case that, that would, is, is necessary or, and again, I, I, I'm not quite sure.
All right, here's, here's, here's how we need to look at it. If they were to build a smaller house, let's say they reduce the size and made it within that lot. Is that better? Is that, is that, because they're still going to have to elevate the house. They're still going to have to wor- worry about the water flow. They're still going to have to put it in you know, the best optimal place, even if it was a smaller house. And I mean, I think even if they bu- built a smaller house and they had these same circumstances and they went to Kevin or whomever, I mean, I think still the best spot would probably almost be where they are.
Yeah, I, I think this has nothing to do with the size of the house.
I agree. The lot is big enough to accommodate that. But I also think that, you know, one of the problems that we constantly run into is that we're always trying to make a, a, a place work where maybe it shouldn't be.
Yeah, well, that's what I was going to say. Do you tell them you just can't build a house? Is that why?
When you can't say that either, obviously, if they stay within code. None of my business if they, where they build a house. It's, that's entirely up to the, the landlord. And that's not what I'm trying to say. I'm just trying to say.
Well, I understand, but I'm just saying, if you look at the slot, do we, I mean, do we say, no, you can't build a house there because, you know, it's not going to work because of the code? Or do we want them to be?
Is this a super majority vote?
Probably yes. I believe as, as a
Was it recommended for denial by?
Yeah, we're, who's on here?
That's a good question.
Oh, and misspelled variances.
Well, and the county's going to say, no, they say, no, everything.
All right.
Well, if the, if the county said no to it, then it would.
Did you see? Did you see Chris's text there?
No.
Says the parcel home just south of Ananda Park is approved of similar variances. Did we do that?
Say that again?
Chris Jensen said the parcel slash home just south of Ananda was approved with similar variances.
Were there county planning comments? I never saw them.
What's that?
We could go to the, uh, the roster and see if there, if that was, if the things, get everything out there. What do you want to ask him? Whether it was, uh, approved by? There's Ontario County TPW comments.
Thank you.
I was looking for Ontario County planning, I think.
Oh, that's different.
And that's the one that would.
Oh, and they said no comment?
Nobody comments? No comments, huh? All right, well, there you go. So it doesn't have to be a super majority.
That's, that's a big deal.
Right?
We'll, we'll find out after.
Exactly.
Which one is, is Chris referring to?
I have, it's south of Ananda, so.
Is it the Hyman Reiser?
It was.
Is he still on?
Yeah. Can we unmute him?
Let's do it.
Unmute all the Chris's content. And we'll talk at the same time. There we go.
It was five, four, seven, five Rochester Point. They did rebuild an existing home, but they're, they're five or six feet or so from the stream.
Oh, okay.
They, they got like, I believe, five or six variances on that parcel.
Well, when was this?
And I remember that, that one had to be built outside of the flood.
I think you're right.
And it was kind of a modern looking home.
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember that.
But, but I, the reason I mentioned things before about putting that disclaimer, after he built and obtained all these variances and everything, they keep coming back saying that the town has to modify the stream, clean up the stream, do all this stuff because they're flooding. I, I just want to know that something, if all the variants are issued, which, I mean, I don't know if you can build a house anywhere else, that they just understand that there will be flooding and ice issues in the future.
That is not responsible on the, on the.
And, and Chris, do you believe that Chris Nadler and the Shatlin's attorney could come up with language that works for all of us, don't you?
Absolutely. Just put it on the site plan itself before signature.
Yeah, that's good. That's good.
So do we still get to vote, even though we don't, may not have the language or what?
Yeah, that's true.
Well, you're saying what the condition is and the condition is that there's a good language.
We can have them. All right. I guess let's call it.
I would also really like to recommend we add the condition that the, the, the trees that they're not going to cut down now. Because the way he said it, he kept saying, um, we, we don't have to take these down. I think we want to add the condition that don't.
Try to keep them down. Yeah.
That's the plan that was submitted to us and we are voting out, so they have to do that. They can't modify that plan.
But the plan that is actually the paperwork shows them still coming down and being left to stop.
Then that's correct. Her interpretation is correct. Also, you want to go with what the land.
If it's approved, then we add that. Then that'll be a condition.
It can just be one of the conditions sometimes.
Yeah, good cut.
Good job.
All right, once in a while.
Applicant is requesting area variance stream setback of three by three and a hundred feet is the minimum. Sixty-five foot variance required. Show the applicant the grants of the sixty-five foot stream setback variance. John Casey.
Yes.
Five million.
Yes.
David Murray.
No.
Uh, Kelly Lloyd.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Oh, yes, I got to give you other conditions. You guys can, uh, chime in.
Now, I, my understanding, are we writing the conditions or?
Well, we're gonna, so how are we doing? So.
Because I'm, I'm not sure I, that I can be comprehensive. I can throw a couple of things in, but there's so much going on in this one.
It's Chris Nadler still around. Well, that's Chris chiming in.
Keep us in line.
Two minutes.
So we'll have Chris, you know, Chris chiming in.
I, I try to honor the code more than a lot of people, but John's out of the ordinance committee and sees there's a little.
So we'll go to the approval of the reasoning? All right. We're gonna go with the, the granting of the variances is. I don't think, do we want to put, we won't change the, because it should be similar.
I, I think we should need Shauna and, and, uh, Chris in on this. I think this one's a.
Well, yeah, we'll add the, we'll chime. I'm just giving the facts. Yeah, so. Well, anyway, so the, I think the uniqueness of the parcel itself is, um, the main reason for, um, our approval of where the, the house is located. The applicants also did their due diligence with checking with Kevin Alveny and, uh, neighbors with property regarding, uh, you know, approval of the project and, and the neighbors were mostly in favor, other than one or two. But I think Kevin Alveny also helped alleviate some of the issues we had, we were concerned about with water flow.
I think you ought to talk about the engineer, uh, modifying the drawings to accommodate our concerns about water flow and the impact to neighbors.
There you go. What did you say? You got that or?
Oh, what did you say? I'm sorry.
Oh, jeez, now you want me to?
It sounded so good the first time, so.
I think that the engineers addressed our concerns relative to the flow of, or the water runoff not impacting the neighbors.
The variance is, is actually substantial, but when working with the applicant, there was really not a lot of, uh, a lot of other options for that person.
I know we want to address the Shannon issue with the plans as not just submitted, but.
Right. So the tree, one of the things that, like you're talking about the trees,
Yeah.
the plantings, um, were not, not to remove the, the five out of the six. Yeah. That's gonna.
Seems like that.
I think one had to go.
Well, what, the other one up at the top, so there were. The five identified trees that were, that were going to be left in stumps will be left as trees.
The trees will be there longer than the trees.
Right. Um, let's see, what else? The rear setback, most of it. The neighbor is also making efforts to put in environmentally friendly, um, grass seeds and mixture of plantings to filter, yeah, filter the water flow which will make its way into the lake.
They're replacing, yeah, with native species.
Yeah. Reducing the, the invasive species and putting in, that was a mix of seed or something. And I think last and not, maybe not least, but, um, I think we should talk about, what was the, what we're going to add on? What was, what were we going to add on?
The biggest thing is.
The fact that they have to come to agreeable language on the owner accepting existing flooding condition.
Yes. Um, is it a condition or is it a?
That is a condition.
It is a condition, okay. I guess it's a condition. One of the benefits of the applicant. Pretty much all that. All right. Did I miss anything? What do you guys think?
I, I still like, uh, having them, um, you know, maybe polish it up a little bit.
Yeah.
I think that's the, uh, that's the most. I think the town wants to not be, uh, held liable if, uh, there's an event. I think that's what Chris.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Said.
Yeah, so from, you know, I mean, the neighbor has to understand this is flood. This is a potential flooding area and that it's not a responsibility of the town to be reinforcing walls and what's that? What did I say? This is neither?
You didn't, but that's.
You all knew what you were trying to say.
Right, yeah, you knew. I was reading and. Right, yeah, you knew. I was reading and talking, it's never a good thing, so.
Chris will roll.
Okay, so we want that in writing. And it goes with the process. All right, anything else? What, what I, what I missed? Yes, which actually, he didn't give me that sheet. This is all inside me, it was just.
I was gonna say, there's.
Yeah, yeah, I asked him for those, you know, he didn't give, he said he was gonna have.
I think it's one year.
Yes, yes, it has to be as planned submitted, right? It has to be, the plans that will submit, it has to be done, the variance has to be, I'd say it goes one year. What is getting now?
I think it's, it goes along with the top and ceiling, isn't it?
Yes, they have to pick it in the descriptions and drawings, provide that, the July eighteenth, nineteenth meeting.
We thought much time to make this come down.
Received, um, I don't know what day you received them, what, what day did you receive? Yeah, multiple, right? It's like the last one was the.
It's in the upper seventies.
But I, to me, it would seem like.
All right, yeah, I can't remember what the date was, but. If I think of anything, I'll let you know.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, all right. Let's see.
Why don't we address the artisan meet so that we?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah, we could do that. All righty.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay, we're gonna call it for, yeah.
Any discussion and then discussion serves.
Oh, no, I don't think so.
I think it's a perfect reason for a variance.
Well, and we already gave them the one, just that they didn't execute it within the twelve months, so.
Well, that one is the character of the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I was gonna say, right?
And it is a benefit to the community.
Exactly, and I don't think it was self-created.
Nobody's, yeah.
Maybe, maybe.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see any issue with this one, I mean, obviously. Everybody good?
Let's call it.
All right.
You're gonna call each variance or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Individually?
No, we'll do that.
Okay.
Applicant is requesting area variance side setback of forty-eight foot, eight feet is required. Twenty-eight foot side setback variance required. The applicant is also requesting area variance rear setback of five foot one fifty feet is required. Forty-five foot rear setback variance required.
So you're reading them as combined?
Oh, no, I just read the, the top part, so I'll do the role for each one.
Okay.
Shall the applicant be granted a twenty-eight foot side setback area variance? John Casey?
Yes.
Bob Hilliard?
Yes.
Dave Emery?
Yes.
Kelly Lloyd?
Yes.
Shannon Shavie?
Yes.
Uh, shall the applicant be granted a forty-five foot rear setback? Bob Casey? Or John Casey?
Yes.
Uh, Bob Hilliard?
Yes.
Dave Emery?
Yes.
Kelly Lloyd?
Yes.
Shannon Shavie?
Yes. All right, so. Start off with the as to pick the whole structure design.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The applicant, um, I believe that the variance that was within the character of the neighborhood, um, there was a previous variance that was already granted, that was past the twelve month mark. Re-granted again. I don't think it will have an adverse effect on the property or neighboring property.
What's the, what is the zoning designation?
It was industrial, they were trying to.
Yeah, what do they call that on the map? You can't remember, but I mean, in that, in that zoning district, this is totally.
Is it ag?
No, it's industrial. I'm not sure it's best, but I, I think another condition is the fact that there's easement running adjacent to the property line as well.
Yes, yeah. You don't have to worry about, so the one setback was, uh, the one setback was close on the one side, right?
That was on the north, north side of the property.
Yeah. The easement on that side of the property will prevent anybody from.
Creates buffer, creates separation.
I was gonna say, I'm building close from that, that lot line.
Oh, sorry, I set up.
No, no, I was just trying to see.
Yeah, there's a nightmare what they said of that south floating dock.
Right. Honestly, I don't think.
That's where all my questions were.
Nope.
Trees.
Ready to move on to the elements?
Yeah, I don't think there's really much more we can add to this one, just normal, normal conditions, yeah. Yeah, all right, I don't, I don't see a big issue with that. All right, who else is up? So the wiser one, we moved, right?
Yeah, John, it's a good thing you said something. They didn't have a good scanner report on how we operate here.
Yeah.
They were, they were.
I was actually. I was glad that you brought that up because I was gonna say something, you know, like, you may wanna, I mean, just, I, I didn't wanna say we're, we're gonna deny it, but I mean, like, you know, I wanted to.
I'm glad you didn't.
Yeah, right?
You know, I mean, Shawna usually.
I didn't wanna make it sound like we were.
Maybe, they didn't do the extra step of coming in and working with her.
Well, they said they, I thought they said they did.
Or did they?
Yeah, they said they talked to her, but I, I agree with you. When you, when you call Shawna, come in, she kinda wants, she kinda re-reads everything for you.
All right, go on to Scott Hill, yeah, let's go to Scott Hill now. Um, what do you guys think? What's your, what's your take on this?
Can I ask what a patent is and how that has anything to do with?
I actually was kind of wondering what that was myself. I go just patent block.
I, I was gonna ask if it spelled the same.
Yeah, right, I mean.
That was a new one. I gotta say.
Chris Jensen.
I'd never heard of him.
Chris.
I'm making no comments.
No comment? What do you mean no comment?
The office of general services owns the lake, not us.
So what the heck is a patent, though?
I do not know.
And, and I don't know if it really had any.
I mean, that's why I didn't ask through the whole thing, is that I don't think that changes anything here.
Yeah.
No, that's part of block coverage or building coverage.
All right, thanks. All right, so anyway. Nobody has any objections or what, what's your, what's your thought process?
I mean, I, I think he's putting it in a place where it's the best compromise.
Well, and.
Where he's minimizing the impact to the slope, but yet trying to get the building off the road.
Yeah, as I was just gonna say, he's disturbing less, eh, just like Chris said, it was a balancing act, right? I mean, if you put a house back, you're digging more into the hill and you disturb more soil.
That's what stuck with me, the balancing act that Chris mentioned. And my concerns were all the execution kind of issue, but, you know, if that's concerned, you know, if the highway department addresses it, great.
I'm already rerouting that in my mind, I'm gonna have to go a little treasure.
Might affect the needle.
Yeah, right, for, for a couple of months.
Very selfish movement.
All right, I mean, nobody else, nobody has any concerns?
There seems to be a lot of other garages like that built to the angle on that side.
Yeah, it's not, it's definitely. All right, I guess we call it.
All right. Applicant is requesting area variance front setback of forty feet when sixty feet is the minimum. Twenty-four, twenty-foot front setback variance required. Applicant is also seeking relief from chapter two twenty-eight D one B three, which prohibits accessory structures that require greater than four thousand square feet of land disturbance. When the applicant is proposing seventy-seven hundred square feet of area disturbance within the steep, slow protection. First one, shall the applicant be granted a twenty-foot front setback area variance? John Casey?
Yes.
Bob Hilliard?
Yes.
Dave Emery?
Yes.
Kelly Lloyd?
Yes.
Shannon Shavie?
Yes.
Shall the applicant be granted relief from chapter two twenty-eight D one B three? John Casey?
Yes.
Bob Hilliard?
Yes.
Dave Emery?
Yes.
Kelly Lloyd?
Yes.
Shannon Shavie?
Yes. Oh wait, did we see these, this chat over here, by the way?
Oh, that's the word.
You know, so is it, I think he said something about the language in there. Maybe we can add that in.
Yeah, that looks good.
Yeah, that's what I, I figured.
I mean, it's punchable, so it's, it's.
God, I know, I'm exhausted. Need a shower. All right, so I'll let you do that first and then I'll.
After execution.
Okay, any other board, you wanna make close it?
Well, we have to approve the meeting minutes, I think.
Yes, can anybody look at the minute, the meeting minutes?
I just briefed them quickly.
I did too, I, I, so nobody saw any red light?
No, no.
So we approve?
I'll make a motion to approve in a second.
Perfect, fine. All right, I'll write it down in case you're.
See you all later, Anna. Take care of.
All righty, John. And I'll read out.
Cut out again.
It's got a hot beat. Oh, good, you emailed.
It'll be much better in town board. You don't have to see me at all. I was gonna say the Alex, and I was gonna say, get, get rid of me.
Oh, there you go, I guess.
Well, you'll be voting me out.
I sang it. All right, all right, so let's see. Where were we?
Voting on the minutes, yes.
Oh, voting on the minutes, well, all we did, we voted on the minutes while you were, that's right. Uh, John?
I second.
And, yeah. All right, now we'll go back to the city. All right, so this is for the health application. Obviously, as depicted by the, I don't know if I'm gonna read it every time, it's the number one reason, the, the plan submitted. That could be a common. All right.
Okay.
Uh, the applicant demonstrated, um, I don't know, I'll never, I'll retract that one. We believe that this granting of variance was within keeping keeping within the character of the neighborhood. We don't believe that it will change the character of the neighborhood and, um, impact the other properties, neighboring properties. The garage is probably at an optimal location from soil disturbance, we don't pushing that further back.
The view from the lake.
Would, yeah. Pushing it further back would, would actually impact soil disturbance. And what Dave says, there's no impact to the lake, no view impacting. And what else?
They addressed the drainage issue.
Oh, yeah.
They, uh, good point.
Yeah, they did, actually.
And the reinforcement, you said, on the wall would actually be a good thing, you know, holding the.
Is it a wall, though? I thought it was just stone, wasn't it just?
It's a smelt wall with rebar with stone behind it and stone, but it was gonna, it wasn't gonna be like a solid stone, right? I mean, that's. With, with drainage stone behind it with the, that's around the number two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So yes, there's potential to improve the drainage in that area. Nah, I think, I don't know, I can't think of anything else in the grant, it's probably. It has been. Other than that.
Good.
Does that work? Everybody good?
For a minute.
We did approve the minutes. Yeah, we did that, we skipped ahead, so. Other than that, so, uh, do we wanna move to close all the meeting, meeting adjourned?
Meeting adjourned.
All right.
After you turn it off, I have one comment.
All right, John, good. Bye.
Bye.
See ya.
Bye, guys.